So.
Turn on my power.
Yeah.
Put it to us.
So that's when he was like, I so. This way you can be so right. I'll I'll go about it later. That's when he was like. I so. This way you can be so right. I'll I'll go about it later. So good to see you. Hmm.
Right.
I got the.
One person only.
That's good.
Okay, yeah, I can have just see which one.
All right. I'm waiting. You know what? The chamber. Your family watch tonight. But how so I am for make sure that you're forty days. Listen.
The worst.
Okay. Thanks for coming tonight. Mm hmm. I did. I didn't really think that's her. You know. That wasn't a, you know, yeah, it was right. That's why I'm like.
I saw you too, right? I mean, I think I've I've met you before, but.
Yeah.
Those numbers now.
I hear.
Do you know what I mean? Just put.
Let's see.
That way.
I am.
Hope you can hear everything you say.
That's awesome. Thanks. It's Mary, right? It's good to see you.
Good.
How are you?
I guess this. I said, I'm here, but. Listen. Who's speaking first?
I.
Yeah, so I'm going to take you to school. At the time. What's your house? Yeah, I didn't have nothing else. That's.
Great. He's dark picture.
When I do that. Don't whisper. This is stupid, right? We're letting stuff.
Okay. It's trauma. So. You still. So. Is that on there?
Yes, that sounds very.
All right, I'd like to make just a quick announcement. Concessions said that they will be open until seven thirty. So. And you need to grab it now, but they will be they will be closing down. So. Hello, welcome.
My name is. You can't hear it? The call I know who's kind of wrong, listen to us. Maybe we'll wait. Maybe we'll wait just a second.
Get that other mic, Gary. Can we get that other mic, Gary? Get a microphone.
It's. Here it's. Okay. No, it's right on. Um, welcome. My name is Dan Van Ho and I'm the director of membership and development with the Cash Valley Chamber of Commerce. And we are excited to host this event, Let's Talk Logan, here in the beautiful Utah Theater. Um. This is part of what we do at the Chamber of Commerce. We support our businesses. We support our community. This is what we do. This is what we love to do and be a part of it and provide this service to you. So welcome everyone for being here this evening. Uh, tonight is designated to bring Logan residents together for a thoughtful, forward-looking discussion. The candidates will each give a three to four minute introduction and identify a priority for Logan's future. Uh, at this time, I would like to recognize our candidates that are here on the stage uh for Logan City Castle. And we have Brian Siemens, Katie Lee Coven, Melissa. Dally. And Ernesto Lopez. For our mayoral candidate, we have Mark Anderson. Alana Nafner unfortunately cannot be here because she has COVID. So she sends her regards and says that if you would like to have more information about her and her and her stance on things, you could go to her website at A L A N N A F O R M A Y O R dot com. So that's Alana for mayor dot com. Some of us need the microphone.
Is this one working?
Try try that one.
How is? Goes in and out.
Let me see if it's working. Is this working? Yes, it is. These mics directional, which means you have to hold them just like that. If you do it like that, they go away.
Okay.
Thank.
Here's you some mic.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. Yeah, so I have the pleasure of introducing our moderator this evening, Dr. Damon Kane. Dr. Damon Kane is an award-winning researcher and teacher who is currently professor in the Department of Political Science at Utah State University. His book on Congressional Campaign Finance, Sharing the Wealth, won the two thousand nine Richard Fano Junior Prize for the Best Book on Legislative Studies, published in two thousand eight. His two thousand fifteen book Voters Verdicts won the two thousand sixteen Virginia Gray Book Award for the Best Book on State Politics or Policy. His articles have been published in a variety of journals, including the Journal. That's my spot. A Politics Political Research Quarterly, American Politics Research, State Politics and Policy Quarterly, and Public Choice. His commentary on politics has been sought by a range of print, radio, and television outlets, including The Washington Post, Salt Lake Tribune, KSL, and the Salt Lake Media Markets ABC affiliate. He's a major advocate of academic public engagement. Dr. Kane previously served as mayor of North Logan City. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Damon Kane.
Evening. Uh, thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. It's wonderful to see to see you. I'm mindful of the fact that none of you have come to see me, but rather the people that are most important on this stage are those uh beside me uh who have uh a a desire to serve by running for elective office here in Logan City. Uh, I want to express my thanks to the Cash Valley Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event, to the Utah Theater and the folks in the organization surrounding it for making tonight possible by making this facility available. Uh. Most importantly, I want to thank uh the candidates uh who have have come to be here tonight to engage in this discussion. Uh, as we begin, I want to make sure I give a little bit of context because rather than going for a traditional uh uh debate that you might see on a cable TV show, uh the rules of the evening are more oriented uh towards stimulating the kind of environment of substantive policy discussion and group decision-making that will actually be the format that members of city councils, mayors, and other elected officials use to try to move public policy forward and get things done on behalf of the people. Uh, so uh uh thank you to the candidates who have agreed in advance to the following principles for tonight's discussion, and we ask that the audience adhere to these principles as well. First, respect. Listen with care to others and speak with civility. Second, optimism. We want to focus on ideas and solutions for Logan. Third, fairness. We'll share time and space so that all voices of of our candidates here uh can be heard. Fourth, no personal attacks. The discussion is not about people. The discussion is about policies and ideas. And fifth, if time allows us. It's about policies and ideas. And fifth, if time allows us uh to take questions from the audience, the question should be concise and clear and asked in the spirit of 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 policy improvement rather than a targeted attack at any of the candidates. So with that in mind, we'll begin with opening statements of three to four minutes from each of the candidates so they can introduce themselves, talk about why they're running, and share an idea if they would like uh for things we can do to improve our community. Uh, opening statements will come first from the city council candidates, uh followed by our mayoral candidates. I randomly selected the order in which those opening statements will go, uh and uh that order will be first Katie Lee Coven. Second, Brian Stevens, Siemens, excuse me. Uh, third, Melissa Dally, fourth, Ernesto Lopez. And then on the mayoral candidates, Mark Anderson will uh give his introductory statement last. Uh, we send our best wishes to mayoral candidate Alana Knopseger, uh who is uh as as was previously mentioned, ill tonight and unable to attend. Uh, um, when we get to the time for the two-minute closing statements at the end of the evening, we will repeat that order. So you get the first word or towards the front end or the last word or towards the end, but you don't get the first and the last word of the debate. So uh that 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 rotation will hopefully help us to be fair in the timing uh that we have for that. Uh, so first, we'll go to opening statements. If you see me, audience members pull out my cellphone. It's not because I'm checking my text messages in the middle of the debate. It's because I'm running a timer while we're at it. Uh, with that in mind, uh, yeah, baseball. Exactly. Uh, um, Ms. Lee Coven, uh, if you would go first for your uh four-minute opening statement.
Michael. All right. Hi, I'm Katie Lee Coven, and um I want to help preserve the parts of Logan that we perish and improve areas where we fall short. With my experience as an executive director and service on various city committees over the past few years, I feel very prepared and informed to take this role and make a positive impact. I have served as chair of the Hillcrest Neighborhood Council for the past four years and am a founding member of the Public Art Committee for the City of Logan and a member of the Logan General Plan Steering Committee. In these roles, I have helped improve communication about city-related projects to Hillcrest neighbors and advocated for them as well. Professionally, I serve as the Executive Director of the Nora Apple's Harrison Museum of Art at Utah State University. And that role, I've managed multiple um multi-multi-million dollar capital campaigns. I oversee policies and procedures and staff. Um, I've expanded in K through twelve engagement to serve every school in Logan and Cache school districts and to ultimately create a welcoming space for all. Um, I am Mary. My husband Mark Lee Coven is here tonight. Um, and we have a nine-year-old daughter in the Logan School District, and we we love Logan. Some of the issues that I care about include affordable and diverse housing, collaborating with Utah State University to create more student housing, ensuring fiscal responsibility and transparency, improving communication with residents, and backing a new multipurpose indoor recreation and community center and partnership with the county. I also care about water and energy resources and um that are sustainable for future generations. We were asked to um share one priority. For me, it's housing. Uh, Logan has eighteen thousand seven hundred housing units. Thirty-eight percent of those are owner are owner occupied compared to seventy percent in Utah. A third of those are multifamily housing, whereas twenty-five percent, uh, which is twenty-five percent higher than the US average. USU has twenty thousand students on its campus and housing for about thirty-five hundred of them. Housing in Logan has been a perennial issue for many, many years. It is not a new issue, but I don't think we can solve this issue of increasing homeownership and affordable and diverse options if we don't collaborate with USU and get creative both with private partnerships and the city to figure out how to expand more housing for students. You can't have housing for thirty-five hundred students when there are over twenty thousand and expect to make a dent in Logan City on housing availability and affordability. So um as someone who works for USU, has relationships with a lot of our leaders at USU and legislators, I feel well-positioned to try to make a dent in that um and see if we can make some headway. And closing, um, while I bring experience to this role, I am not an expert in all areas that the council is responsible for. And I want to hear from you as citizens, and I want to hear from the experts so that we can come up with the best solutions. So um with that, I will stop and just thank the chamber, thank Utah Theater, and thank all of you for wanting to be informed and engaged and um and make a good vote. So.
Next up, uh, we will hear from Brian Siemens uh for four minutes. Could I just slip down and give you a one-minute signal? Uh, that that was like to within two seconds of your exact time.
That's it.
Can I use can I use your table? I brought a brought an object. Demonstration that lesson. It's not necessarily, I don't know. Yeah, I'm sort of a less. My name is Brian Siemens. Um. I'm a native of Cash Valley. I grew up in Hyde Park. I sounds like I'm. Tended Mount Crest, um. Graduated from Utah State where I uh studied economics. I've met my wife there. We live on the island now. Um. We have three boys. Twenty-one, nineteen, and seven. And why I'm running, my primary concern or one of my primary concerns for them beyond their health and safety is the cost of living and the cost of housing in Cash Valley in Utah. Uh. Fifteen years ago, you may all remember this. I'm not telling you anything new. But this is to represent my purse. So you know, it's my purse. This is your purse. This. Economics, they like to use guns and butter. I didn't think guns would be appropriate tonight, so. I brought butter.
Good.
Yeah. This goes bad. Um. Anyway, um. Fifteen years ago, this would have represented the government's share of butter. Um, this is represents the government's share of butter now. My question for you would be, has your income gone up that much? Um, now that's the smallest government share because that's grocery. If you want to buy your little boy a new coat, that would represent the government's share. If you want to go out to eat, then we'd have that. Um, and my concern is now now I'm a builder now. And I've seen two different studies on our local policies, national, local policies, and the effect they have on the cost of housing. And it would surprise you that the most expensive, I don't think I could stack these coins high enough to represent the cost of local government on the cost of housing, and it's somewhere between twenty percent and forty percent. Uh, that things that we do and decisions that we make stack this higher. Like, this is, we're we're not at ten percent. If you wanted to get to forty percent, we would need to be there. If we want to work on the cost of life and living, it it starts here, and it's very critical. And and what you'll hear over the next few years is someone will come to you with a new idea, and they'll say, hey, we need this, and it's only going to cost you that. And we need this, and it's only going to cost you that. But you know what? That never stops. That goes forever. And and then they're going to come back to you and say, you remember what we did ten years ago? We got to fix it up. And it costs that. And we got to continue to maintain it. Uh, and we got to work on it that way. Um, oh, by the way, we did this. Oh, we forgot to tell you about it, and it's going to cost you this that we've accumulated. What my total focus and reason for running is is this needs to stop, and if it can, I'd like it to go backwards a little. Um. That's how we help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siemens. Uh, next up, we have Melissa Dally.
Yes.
Put it to one minute.
We go. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Dally. As I stated, um, I am a resident of Cash Valley. I have been my whole life. I graduated from Skyview High School. I got my bachelor's degree from Utah State University in Business Information Systems and um grew up in Newland, so this is my area. Uh, for the past twenty-two years, I've called Logan home, a place I truly love and I'm dedicated to serving. And over the last decade, I've worked to help Logan grow stronger through active community involvement and leadership. I served as chair of the Woodruff Neighborhood Council for about six, seven years. I can't remember exactly. Um, but it's where I helped develop the ten-year neighborhood plan for Woodruff Neighborhood. Um, I also advocated for safer streets and sidewalks for our students that were walking to Woodruff Filamentary and made it a priority to listen to both residents and developers when big changes were proposed. I firmly believe in hearing both sides of an issue before making a decision. Um, educates education is also a cornerstone with my service. I have served on every school community council that my children have attended. I'm currently serving as chair of the Mount Logan Middle School Community Council and Logan High School Community Councils, where we work as parents and administrators and teachers of the school to ensure that land trust funds are used responsibly and effectively to help all students succeed. Um, I also serve, as you can tell, I have a issue with saying no to people. Um. I also serve as chair of the Logan City Parks and Recreation Board. I've been on that board for three years, but served as chair for the last year, and this is currently my second year. Um, through this role, I've been I've seen firsthand the vital role that recreation parks and trails play in our community's health and quality of life. I'm continued committed to continuing that growth, um, not just for families, but for individuals and seniors as well. Uh, my husband Lynn is here tonight as well, and we are the proud parents of four wonderful children and one daughter-in-law. Our oldest is twenty-three, then we have a twenty-year-old and a sixteen-year-old and a twelve-year-old. So as you can see, I have a big range of children in my life. Um. I understand the needs of growing families, and I know how important it is to have a city that supports and serves them well and plans for a responsible future. Um, and part of that is being involved in the schools and having a relationship with our our schools, our school district, um, just because I help, it helps build our communities and when we have students that are attending the schools where they live. I'm running for Logan City Council to bring responsive, transparent leadership that reflects our shared values. I believe in open communication, and I want to help make it easier for our residents residents to feel heard and involved. Communication builds community and helps us feel united. Thank you for being here tonight. I really appreciate you coming out and getting informed. Um, your engagement matters, and I hope as you head to the ballot box that you don't delete and you vote for Dally. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Ernesto Lopez, and um I'm currently on the city council, and I'm look looking or hoping to be reelected to continue for four more years. I've been fortunate to to be able to serve on the on the city council, first as an appointee and and then um winning a an election back in twenty twenty-one. Um, I am not native to Utah, to the US. I'm an immigrant. I I grew up in Mexico, in Tijuana, Mexico, and I moved to southern Idaho back in ninety-six. And then shortly after that, came to Logan to go to college in ninety-nine, and I've been here since then. So I I do consider myself a Loganite. Uh, because I've been here for most of my life, and I I've grown to love and value our valley, our community. And I I my wife was here and uh and my kids, we all contribute to to this community one way or another. I have two college kids at USU. Um, and uh we love them, and and they love our youth, and later we'll probably get to talk a little more about that. Um, I have a history of serving our community uh beyond the the city council, through church, through schools, programs. Um, I worked for Bay River Heston for more than ten years. Um. And I've been at USU now for almost for over six years, uh, leading a team that produces. uh leading a team that produces online courses, uh making education accessible to the community. Uh, a lot of the research-based content um that the university produces ends up being uh put together into online courses for our community, and that's what I do. Um, I, if reelected, I hope to um continue to emphasize the need to to continue to work on housing affordability. Uh, I would love to continue to advocate for a more sustainable future with energy and water. And um I also would hope to continue to encourage people to get more engaged in our process. I think that's probably one of the highest, longest things that we have in our system and our process, and uh I would love to encourage that more and more. Thank you.
Next up, uh, mayoral candidate Mark Anderson.
Thank you for coming. This is a very exciting night, and uh we tried to put something different. This is not a meet and greet night, but something that inspired, is setting and advancing. Couple years ago, I was able to visit with Stan Tethix. If you don't remember Stan Tethix, he founded S and S Power Charries. He has roller coasters all over the world. He was a major investor into not just our community, but into Logan as well, too. And he came to my place because I have a marvel engineering in our business that Stan just fell in love with the first time he saw. And he came over to visit one day, and he said, can I take a look at that? I was like, sure, it's in the bathroom. And so we were talking and visiting, and he was telling me about the projects that he had going on, and he was he was telling me about all these different businesses. I was like, Sam, why do you do all this stuff? It's like, you're so busy. You've got so many things going on. How do you do it? And his response was, if there's something that you need to get the you get the busiest person that you know to do it, then they will get it done. They'll get it done wrong. And as I thought about that, thought about it, and uh you've been pretty busy putting this stuff together. Yeah, there's people that are like that. I thought about myself and it's like, am I that person? Because that's what Sam said. When he said that, he said, you get the busiest person. I'm that person. All right. I thought about it. It's like, okay, I've got two businesses to run. I've got a family. I've got a wife I really enjoy doing things with. I love working together with her. I've got two kids at USU. You've got one who's trying to be a pilot for the Air Force. I've got one. His family's trying to get here from Arizona, and I understand firsthand how difficult it is to sell a house and to buy a house in this market. I I get it. I've been on city council for six years. Uh, Center Street is not our baby, but we are involved in Street. It's like this. Anderson's Center Street. That's us, the best we can have. I'm also serving on the Cache Water business as well, too. I don't need another job. I don't need another job as new, but guess what? Not me, I'm that person. Right? I'm that person. All right. Why? Why do I run for mayor? Sounds like it. I love a challenge. Throw a challenge at me, I will try and find a way to deal. So there's so much to learn as mayor. I find it exhilarating and exciting to just learn, meet these media people, and to be just to be a part of it. It's it's so exciting. You have so many great opportunities ahead of us as the city, as a community, who decided to be a part of it. I'm going to tell you, a mayor is not an entry-level position. You have to, you have to have some experience to do this. I am so excited about what's happening in Logan. I really want to be a part of it. I want to keep the ball rolling because Mayor H does a great job at building our community, building what we're bringing here. I want to keep that ball rolling because I feel like I've been a part of it, obviously, so. I do want to teach, serve my community. There's not many people who are willing to put the time in, who are willing to put their community above themselves. I'm that person. Logan needs someone with vision, someone with energy, someone with excitement, someone with drive, who's responsible, who wants to get things done, and who wants to work. You may get better.